counties besides our Greene County here. And so it's a large area within the state of Ohio that he is responsible for and representing in terms of the school board. So it's a big job. He took over that job not too long ago. In fact, just last year, and he's going to be reelected in 24. Maybe, huh? Hope so. Hope that happens. So that's what's coming up in the future. Brendan is a research analyst, has been, but then he moved over as a business owner, and he's a financial analyst. He's obviously also District 10. And right now, that's what we're going to be talking about tonight. And that's where he's spending his time, his background. He's got a bachelor's degree in English from Colby College. He's got a large family through our educators. So he's well-schooled in education. He believes in the life-changing power of education. We couldn't ask for somebody better in that position than somebody that believes in the true power of education. He and his wife Lisa homeschool their five children, which is a big task. And that task is going to become larger, I understand, because a sixth one is on its way down the street of ways. But it's new, but the sixth one is coming. That's great. And he's a founder and president of the Madison Right to Life, Madison County Right to Life, former president and member of the Local Rotary Club. And certainly, he's passionate about education for everyone, and particularly his children. And with five kids, six kids now, you wouldn't expect less. And so he's a perfect representative for the school board. Brendan, we're very happy to hear you and have you here and talk about such an important subject as critical race theory. We have some documents. We have the resolution that he's going to be talking about on the table. And that resolution's about three pages long that was signed back in 2020. And you'll each want to get a copy of that, so you'll understand completely what's in that resolution. There is also a critical race theory heritage action document back there. I've only made a few copies. Each one's about nine pages, so I only made a few. But you can write, go back there, sign up for it, put your name and address, your email address, which Paul is holding up right now, and I'll send you a copy of that document. I think you'll want it. It's a good document. And it's going to, I'm sure it will say a lot of the things that Brendan is going to say tonight. So Brendan, with that, you got it, babe. Appreciate it.
Put my stopwatch on to make sure I don't go to 9 o'clock. Take time for questions. But thank you very much, Denny. It's great to be here. Brendan Shea, it's my honor to represent you on the board for District 10. Denny mentioned what that includes. So it's a pretty, pretty large area. I'm from London in Madison County, so not, not too far away. This is a, this is an impressive turnout, I have to say. I'm inspired to see so many people here, especially so many board members and board candidates.
Amen.
You know, we, we need more engagement in all levels of education, but certainly at the local level. I haven't seen much of that. You know, a lot of these meetings, they ask the same question. I've been disappointed with the rather low turnout among current board members and people who are involved. So that's, that's great to see. I'm never going to presume that everyone in the room is necessarily a card-carrying conservative or is going to agree with everything I'm going to say. I hope you do. But if you don't, I want to give you permission to please stay and ask questions. Because I've been traveling now, at this point, around the state. And more and more, these meetings, word about these meetings is getting out in advance. Maybe not at a tea party meeting like this, but at many community functions, I've had folks there that weren't necessarily in agreement. And sometimes they get up in a huff and, you know, make a scene and leave. And I said, why don't you please stay and ask some questions? And we'll talk about it. We'll talk about our differences. Because I, unlike some of the fellow members on the board, I'm not in this to be in my safe space. Literally, there's a member on the Board of Education who said that the state board is her safe space. So don't make an argument that she disagrees with, or you're attacking her, because it's no longer her safe space. So that's, that's what we're up against, folks. So I'd like to give you a little background on the state board, on critical race theory. And then I'd like to go through the resolution that Denny mentioned and kind of give you a sense of where the rubber meets the road. It's one thing to hear about the theory or to hear it on Tucker Carlson. By the way, God bless that man. I mean, God bless him. God bless the fact that we have a mainstream network that is still able to speak and still willing to put these things out there. A year ago, if I said critical race theory, or I said the Ohio Equity Resolution, people, no one would have known what I was talking about. No one. And this passed, this garbage that we're going to go through, this passed one year ago. So within a year, I'm, I'm, I'm very hopeful seeing how much progress we've made in terms of getting the message out there and in terms of fighting back. Obviously, we have a lot more to do. So a little bit about the background of the board. There's 19 members on the board. 11 of those are elected. Eight are appointed. So as you saw, the districts are pretty large, right? So 11 elected members to represent the entire state of Ohio. That means each one of us represents almost a million people. That's a, that's a large, oftentimes geographic and certainly populous area to represent. So it's a challenge to get around. People don't know. People go, they vote, they don't know who they're voting for. I'd like to say I won because everyone loved me. They don't, they don't know. I thank, you know, strong county parties like Greene County for putting me on the slate card. If it weren't for that, there's no way, there's no, there's no way I would win. And it was close as it was in an extremely conservative district. Only won by a couple thousand votes and 400,000 votes cast. President Trump, in that same, that same district, won like 75%. So what does that tell you? That means that there were people voting, they had no clue. They were just picking a name. They weren't voting their values. They were just saying, oh, Mary Binnigrood, sounds good. I like the name. Or I'll, I'll vote for a woman. The board is nonpartisan, so you don't have an R or a D next to your name. That's an important thing to note. A bit on politics, real quickly. A lot of times, people will say, stop being political. That's, that's just a, that's just a political argument. Don't bring politics into education. It's kind of like the folks who say, the science is settled. You know, move along. Nothing to see here. The science is settled. Usually, that means the science is very much not settled. And they just don't want to have the argument. They don't want to have the debate. The same is true in education. It's so convenient. The other side, they say, that's just a political argument. But truly, they're the ones who are political operatives or being political. It's just a radical liberal agenda. That's, that's the fact of the matter. So I think I would like to see us be more honest about the political nature of education decisions. Local boards, the state board, I would like to see it roped into the political system more. Because it already is, we're just, people aren't aware and pretend that it's not there. So I think that would be helpful. But that's just a little bit of makeup on the board. Critical race theory, I probably don't need to spend as much time on as I would have six months ago, nine months ago, one year ago. Denny put it up there, the oppressor versus the oppressed. It all boils down to that, right? There's a group of oppressors. There's a group of oppressed. They've said the whites are oppressors and blacks are the oppressed. And they see and they view everything in the world, everything that happens, systems on down, through that lens. That's what it's, that's what it's all about. The theory essentially comes from critical theory, which was a product, a brainchild of higher education, right? Professors, writing papers. But eventually, as so many things are, it gets rebranded or repackaged for the masses. And it made its way into boardrooms, D E I, diversity, equity, and inclusion. And so a lot of the principles, a lot of the concepts that are in a resolution like this, and that I'm going to talk about, are things that your average parent is familiar with from their, from their business or from their employment. They sound benign, they seem benign on the surface, but what's underlying them is a true attempt to divide and conquer. It's Marxism. That's, that's what it is, plain and simple. It's a Marxist philosophy. You might not always know it. I think most people don't. They're starting to catch on. But that's how this, I believe, was so easily brought into the public consciousness in, in schools. Is because it was already in society, it was already in businesses and corporations. People were bathing in it, drinking, drinking it in without knowing it. And so when they see the term equity doesn't mean anything to them, yeah, that sounds good. They immediately think it's equality. And I'll talk about the difference. And they say, yeah, that sounds good. That's what, that's what we're talking about at work. So that's critical race theory. How is this translated? And what's been the trajectory on the board of education? So last June, you might remember a little incident, tragic incident with George Floyd. I remember a little something about that. Never let a good crisis go to waste.
Ramadan maybe, what?
Yeah. And they sure did not. The Ohio Board of Education did not let that crisis go to waste. And most liberal institutions in America did not. They capitalized on it. So that, a couple days later, just a couple days later, the president of the board brought forward a resolution, this equity resolution, which we're about to go over. At the time, it was a little more benign than in its current form. And then the following month, it was voted upon. There was no opportunity for public comment. The discussion, the debate amongst the board went late into the night, 11 o'clock. The board members, some of the conservative board members said, what's the rush on this? I mean, there's a lot of resolve clauses, clauses here. Why do we need to take action on this today? Why can't we have, why can't we study this more? Why can't this be referred to a committee? Why can't the public have an opportunity to weigh in? But they, they, no, no, nope. It was, it was ran through, it was pushed through. Essentially, the vote was 11 to 5 with one abstention. And I will note that all five members who opposed it are elected and were elected members of the board. So people, people, go ahead.
You mentioned the appointed. Who appoints them? You didn't follow up with that.
The governor appoints. The governor, okay.
So we have the Republican governor.
Was there a change for the last governor? So that half of the board members are appointed? And that wasn't discussed? Want to talk about that during the question, maybe?
Half of the board?
Yeah, so it used to be they were all elected. But there was something that happened a few years ago, where now half of them are appointed by the governor. And that happened with the same governor who ran for president, who was Republican.
I think it goes further back than that, was my understanding. And it actually goes back to the point of it. That's, that's my understanding. And it's not half, it's, it's eight of 19, which is still a very high number. Now, Governor Kasich did appoint many of the, you know, the folks who were on there at the time. But they were re-upped by the current governor. And then he had the opportunity, this January, there was an additional re-upping of many of these same folks. So for, for what it's worth. Now I'd like to get into the resolution. Denny said he was going to have copies. I have copies too. Do you have enough?
I think we have about 60 between us.
Okay.
Now, or be.
I can sign up, guys. I'll, I can.
Why don't you put them on one side? Okay, start over here. These over here.
So just so you know, I'm sorry, they're not stapled, but sir. So it's two, yes, two.
Brendan? So in January, when, I should second, July, reappointed certain members? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Were those members that he reappointed the ones who had voted in favor of the resolution in July?
So all, at the time, last July, I believe there were seven appointed members on the board. There was one vacancy. And I believe those same seven are still, were reappointed, and they're still on the board today.
By Juwan.
Correct.
And they, so they were the ones that voted?
They voted in favor of this last July.
So that's then, by default, in favor of critical race theory?
It would sure seem that way, based on the appointments.
Because he wouldn't have been able to appoint somebody else, correct?
That's correct. Now, the most recent appointee, and I'll talk a little bit more background, voted with the five conservative members on the board. So I think the message is starting to filter up that folks are very unpleased, very dissatisfied with the board and certainly with some of the appointed members.
Is that making a difference, run these fields?
Well, I do, because look at this recent appointee. He was a strong conservative. He runs a gun rights blog. And in his very first vote on these issues, he voted with us. He voted to, yeah. So I'll talk about what that vote was. So I'm gonna, maybe, just, just to make sure we can cover and stay on track, we'll have, we'll have questions at the end. Try to leave plenty of time for that. Just a little more background. So July, the resolution passed. And then, as you can imagine, there was an increasing public firestorm. A lot of people started waking up and saying, what is this? What happened? People started coming to the board wanting to testify. Some of the conservative members were bringing in experts on history, just to give a fair and accurate account of history and how we are not systemically racist. Well, by November, the board president made a decision, no more testimony from the public on critical race theory or 1619. You could, you could submit written testimony, was what she said, but you could not utter those words. You could not talk, you could not speak about critical race theory or 1619. So this was, yeah, censorship. We have a little bit of that going on in society. So that was in November. I came, I was elected in November, came onto the board in January. So this was the policy that was in place. By April, she, they had to deny a gentleman the opportunity to speak, because he wanted to speak on these topics. And that sparked a debate among the members. The president actually showed a willingness to revisit this policy. And so there was a, there was a debate. But like I said, this one member on the board, she, she started crying and saying, you know, if, if we discuss this, this is not my safe space. How dare you, president, to bring this back? You were right to shut it down. How dare you bring this topic back and allow the public to talk about it? And the president was practically in tears. You know, I'm so sorry for doing that. And then she proceeded to keep the same policy in place. After that meeting, the gentleman who was denied, he sued the board. Amen. I've never been a party in a lawsuit before, but I'm happy. I agree with the case against me.
Well, that's her heart. That's a great statement, my friend.
So he named the board, and he also named the five members who spoke in favor of this policy. He has since dropped the board in the suit, and he's, he's suing the five members in support, you know, very vocal support of the policy. Many of the others are in support of it as well, although we'll see. And I'll tell you about what's happening this coming month. So that, that happened, and then the policy continued as normal. But it still, it still comes up. At this point, people will come in and they will literally say things like, that issue that cannot be named.
The artist formerly known as Prince.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's a laughing stock. It's an embarrassment. You know, we had a gentleman talking about 10 points for local school board candidates to consider. And he literally said, I'm going to skip over the next two points, because you won't allow me to say them. I mean, it's, it's just, it's an absolute embarrassment. So a couple of things that have, that have happened. One is, there's a resolution that we put forward, it will be voted upon next month, to lift this policy, to restore free speech, and to amend our rules to not allow the president to unilaterally impose a restriction like that. So that's going to be voted upon at our next meeting, which actually isn't until September. There's an off-meeting in August. I would tune in. I would, I would, if you care to, go and testify. The public can testify. Mr. Cox wonderfully testified last month. Thank you for being there. So I, I hope people will speak out in, in favor of it. The resolution I'm about to mention next, we got 400 emails in our inbox against what the conservatives were trying to do, right? As it was happening in real time. I mean, it's just, it's just an email campaign. But nevertheless, right? When we say the public is on our side and we know it, they say, well, we just got 400 emails saying the public doesn't like what you're trying to do. So we need, we need public engagement. We need public testimony. And please watch these members vote against free speech in the United States of America.
That's amazing.
If that happens, oh my goodness. Okay, so that's one thing. Then the second thing was, there was a resolution calling upon Attorney General Yost to render a legal opinion on the resolution. The, the idea behind it was, the attorney general has recently signed on to a letter with 18 or 19 other state attorneys general claiming that some of what the Biden administration is doing in education is unconstitutional. Namely, tying history and civics grant money to the acceptance of certain, what they call equity provisions. There is a note in the Federal Register that specifically laws, Ibram X. Kendi, he's the anti-racist crusader guy, right? If you're not an active militant anti-racist, you're a racist. That's Ibram X. Kendi. And talking about the 1619 Project. Holding that up, right? From the New York Times, the 1619 Project. Most people probably know what it is at this point. Premised on the idea that America was actually founded in 1619. All about slavery, right? When the first slaves came to American shores in 1619. So the Biden administration entered a note saying that that is the guideline for what we're going to consider a program that's worthy of our federal grant dollars for civics and, and history. Go ahead.
Wasn't the Pulitzer Prize pulled from the 1619 Project because there was too much false information in it?
Correct. I mean, it's been widely discredited, not just on a subjective basis, but, but on a outright objective basis, just for having complete factual inaccuracies. But yet they're, they're still pushing it. I mean, it's completely untitled.
They just keep changing the names constantly and constantly, it seems like.
Right, right. Okay, I'll do one more, and then I'll go.
I did sign up for the educational emails. I have kept up with them all. But as soon as I saw, hey, money is coming down, I went, there is. Follow the money trail. If the federal government is saying, here, I'm going to enrich you people locally. And maybe that's why they're crying when we're against them. I don't know, sir.
Love of money is the root of all evil.
Yep. And I'll, and I'll talk about that a little bit more. Okay. I'm trying to think about what I was just saying. So this, this resolution. So this resolution was put forward, calling on the attorney general and giving the reasons why we think the attorney general ought to find this resolution unconstitutional. Reasons that he himself signed on to when he signed on to this letter. Well, they were ready, the other side was ready, and they amended the resolution by substitution. It was a tricky maneuver to where they had essentially another resolution, stripping it of all of its substance, all of its meat. And instead, the resolution simply said, recall on Attorney General Yost to provide a legal opinion. So basically, the six conservatives were the only ones that voted against the amended resolution, right? Because we wanted it to go to him in its original form, explaining the reasons why we believe it's unconstitutional. So the six conservative members essentially voted against the amendment. So then the amendment was accepted, it was adopted. Now we had to vote on the amendment. That did pass. That did pass overwhelmingly. The four most liberal members on the board voted against it, saying they didn't want to concede anything, and they didn't want to have the attorney general weigh in, which frankly was the only, that would have been the only coherent position. If you, if you're for this resolution, and, but you're agreeing, well, actually, we're not sure if it's, you know, if it's constitutional or not.
They wouldn't want the ruling.
You know, please weigh in. You know, that, that makes you look pretty silly. So the four liberals who said, no, we don't need a, we don't need a ruling, that's kind of a coherent position, but it kind of tells you where some of the other members are. So that resolution passed. We'll have to see. I think the attorney general's office earlier this week said they're currently studying the issue. Don't know any timeframe or anything like that. But we're just, we're hoping and praying that we can get some help. Because we can't, we can't completely repeal this by ourselves. I'm, we're going to try, we're going to continue to try. One way or the other, I'm going to be bringing forward a replacement resolution for this at our next meeting. Depending on if and how the attorney general weighs in, that will determine what that resolution looks like. Go ahead.
You said there was an amendment to this resolution?
No, not to this one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
To the resolution that a member brought forward to request the attorney general weigh in on this resolution.
Okay, so that amendment did not pass?
No, the amendment passed. So the conservatives wanted the resolution in its current form, which said all the reasons why we think this is bad.
Gotcha.
And by the way, attorney general, would you please weigh in? And so there was an amendment that stripped all the reasons why we think it's bad, and just said, attorney general, please weigh.
Okay.
And that's what passed.
Okay, so it has nothing to do, the amendment has nothing to do with this actual resolution?
No, no. Other than the amendment stripping our reasons for why we think, why we think this is bad.
Gotcha, okay.
All right. So let's, let's turn to the resolution now. So the 20 on it is just the 20th item, the 20th item that was considered by the board that day. It's often referred to as the Equity Resolution. Both the pro and the con side, call it the Equity Resolution. Seems like it has a benign enough title. "Resolution to condemn racism and to advance equity and opportunity for black students, indigenous students, and students of color." We don't really care about Asian students, but just blacks. Okay, or white or anyone else, right?
Pacific Islander.
What's that?
Pacific Islander.
Yeah, right, exactly. First, very first paragraph. I'm not going to read it line by line. But it starts off, "As our nation grapples with the hard truths of racism and inequality, we are listening with broken hearts and engaging with determined spirits. We acknowledge that Ohio's education system has not been immune to these problems. And while we earnestly strive to correct them, we have a great deal of work left to do." These are the folks that have been at the helm of the system for quite a while.
So where you been?
And it's so bad, it's so bad. Poor me culpa, apparently. But, you know, so clearly, this is a reference to what was going on, right? I mean, "As our nation grapples with the hard truths..." I mean, in debate, they tried to say, this has nothing to do with George Floyd. What are you saying? This has nothing to do with George Floyd? Okay? "As our nation grapples with all these things." Two more paragraphs down. "Whereas equity is our plan's greatest imperative and number one principle." So now let's talk about equity. So we already had systemic, systemic racism, or I guess it says education system. Equity is one of the catchphrases, one of the coined phrases of critical race theory. Equity pertains to equal outcomes. And again, it sounds good, because it sounds like equality. We are for equality, equal opportunity. We're all equal in terms of our dignity, the need, and the image and likeness of God. That doesn't mean we're the same, or that, that doesn't mean we have the same abilities. And I would argue that equity and equality are mutually exclusive. You can't have both. Because if you have equal opportunity, by definition, you will have unequal outcomes. That's just, that's just the way it is. Take, take your problem up with God. That's just the way it's going to happen. But it literally says here, it's referencing the Ohio Strategic Plan, which is mentioned in the first, on the first line of the second paragraph. So the Ohio Strategic Plan for Education, it literally says, "State's greatest imperative and number one principle." And I am so old-fashioned. When I got on the board, I thought, maybe we would deal with academic excellence. Maybe, maybe there'd be something about reading, writing, or arithmetic. I thought, maybe, maybe that would be something that we would be concerned with. No, equity. It's the great, not even, like, first among equal, no, no. It's the greatest imperative and number one principle. And boy, the board lives that out. Everything it does, every slide, any presentation, it will literally say on there, the equity lens. Here's this, here's what this means from an equity perspective. Second paragraph from the bottom. "Whereas separate but equal is no longer the law of the land, but systemic inequity," there it is again, "in education has relegated millions of children of color to under-resourced, struggling schools." I want to point out the irony of this statement. "Systemic inequity has relegated millions of children of color to under-resourced, struggling schools." So one of the things that they like to, to point out is redlining. That was a practice in the past where banks or financial institutions would draw red lines around certain parts of the city, African-American, right, minority areas, and say, no loan for you. That was a terrible practice, it was an injustice, it shouldn't have been done. That was 50 years ago. It doesn't occur today. And they still, they still point that out. But here's the irony. If you look at a school district, a current inner-city school district, and you superimpose a redline district from 1950 over that school district, it matches almost identically in just about every major metropolitan area. And who's for school choice? Who's for allowing fluidity of students to go in and out of those districts? Who's for that? The people that are for this type of resolution? No, no, they're for keeping them there. Next line down, "whereas significant gaps between the performance of black students compared to their white peers exist, even in generously resourced schools." So that says, money's not enough. There was a member of the board, she said, you, you conservatives, you misconstrue, shouldn't say that, shouldn't say you conservatives, but you, board members, sirs and madams, you misconstrue this. Equity is just about, if a kid needs classes, give them classes. That's all we want. No, because even in generously resourced schools, they're pointing out that there are significant gaps. And so those gaps must be, must be, that, that must be fixed. Right, again, equal outcome, it's not about equal opportunity, it's not. Next page, three from the top. I just want to, I want to highlight this as an example of a courageous conversation. So they talk about, that's a buzzword. They talk about, we're going to have courageous conversations, we're going to share, and we're going to be, we're going to be courageous. Really, it's the minority are the ones that need the courage, but they say they're going to be courageous. So this is just a courageous paragraph right here. "The first resolved, resolve that the State Board of Education condemns in the strongest possible terms, white supremacy culture." Wow, that must have taken a lot of courage. "Hate speech, hate crimes, and violence in the service of hatred. These immoral ideologies and actions deserve no place in our country's state and school system." Thank you, State Board of Education. We desperately needed that. That means, oh my gosh, we couldn't go on without that, that comment.
Sounds like AOC wrote it.
Right. Two more down. "Further resolve that the State Board of Education shall offer training to board members to identify our own implicit biases so that we can perform our duties, the citizens of Ohio, without racial bias." That's a lie, the opposite is true. Everything is about race. It's all about racial bias.
If they were racist, they should resign.
I agree. We have.
Are any of them African-Americans?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, we, we have, every month, the state superintendent brings in a local district to give what they call the equity presentation. And they talk about, a year ago, we were so bad. We were just, we were, we were so bad, and so racist, our curriculum, everything was so terrible. But now, it's amazing. We've seen the light, you know, we are woken. They don't, they don't use that term. They stopped doing this over the past couple of months because I think they were tired of some of the questions that we would give them. But one of the questions that I like to ask is, Superintendent, thank you so much for being here. It sounds like things were really horrible in your district. I'm really concerned at the level of racism in your district. Can you tell me, how many people have gotten fired over the past 12 months?
Uh, uh, well, yeah.
Board member Shay, I mean, it's not that way. I mean, this is the type of thing. Two more down. "Further resolve that the State Board of Education directs the Ohio Department of Education to reexamine the academic content standards and model curriculums to make recommendations to the State Board of Education as necessary to eliminate bias and ensure that the racism and the struggle for equality are accurately addressed." So model curriculum, I want to pause on that.
Please.
There is no state curriculum. And you need to know that, there are state standards. But please don't say state curriculum, because there is none. One of the saving graces of our current situation is we technically are a local-controlled state. Technically. Technically, we are a local-controlled state, technically. We have over 600 school districts in Ohio. So there's plenty of ways to get engaged and get involved in Ohio. I think there's many examples in which Florida is, is beating us right now. But they only have 60 school districts. I think fewer is better. I think it gives you more of an input, right? And we know what happens top down, so I think, I'm glad. I'm sorry, I reversed that. I think more districts is better, right? So we've got over 600. So there's an opportunity to set curriculum at the local level. Please ask me if I don't address the fact that there is that opportunity, but it's not being done. A lot of local levels are just taking what's prepackaged and what's coming down. Right, that's why they are fighting so hard to have things like the 1619 Project on the Ohio Department of Education website. We say, how'd that get up there? Take it down. They say, it doesn't matter, people, people don't have to use it anyway. We say, why even have it up there? Why, if it doesn't matter, why did someone, why do you pay someone to monitor this website and put it up there? You know that people see this, you know it matters, and it does. Teachers, they, they're, a lot of hits. A lot of people look at that website, a lot of people are looking for model curriculum. And that's what they're passing down.
We'll put the 1776 Project up there too.
That's, yeah, and eventually they did.
So it is up there?
Eventually they did.
So 1776 Project is up there too?
I've seen it up there. Took a, took a while, but they, they, it eventually did. Last paragraph. "Further resolve that the State Board of Education directs the Ohio Department of Education to provide support, support equals money for school districts' reflection and internal examination, including identifying and sharing curricular models and resources, promoting sessions to allow districts to share and collaborate on their actions and to share progress in implementing these changes." I want to give you another example of how support equals money. Do you know that the state is accepting, has accepted billions of dollars from the federal government for COVID relief? They call it ESAR dollars, ESAR 1, ESAR 2, ESAR 3. The most recent grant for ESAR 3, you can look at it, it's something like 96 pages. We had a week to review it before it was submitted, but found out after the fact that there's a line in the appendix, it's not even in the main body, where it says something to the effect of, "all of this is contingent upon complete acceptance of the federal government's equity provisions." And then it says in parentheses, "further guidance is forthcoming on what this means." Literally, so I, literally, it says in there, you know, as you sign, as the superintendent signs this document, you're agreeing to certain things pertaining to equity. Oh, by the way, we'll, we'll explain what that means later on. And that, that's literally what the state just signed on to, to the tune of billions of dollars.
So does that mean when they, if they accept the funding from the federal funding, okay? If the government, if the state of Ohio accepts the federal funding from Washington, that they have to submit evidence of following the federal equity guidelines?
I don't know.
Is that what that means?
I don't know yet.
They don't say.
It, it says, they'll tell me later. So I, that's what I'm certainly concerned about.
Is such a document or agreement legal?
Why is that a problem? Why is that a problem?
Why is it a problem to not know? How would you like to sign a loan document and say, the terms of this loan will be explained to you after you sign? Well, that's what we, that's what we've done.
Is, the appendix is actionable legally?
That's a good question.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
I mean, only a certain small part of a, an arrangement like that is actionable, you know?
That's a good question.
That's a good question.
You know, I'll look, I'll look into that.
That's another great question.
When you mention the superintendent signing, do you, are you referencing the state superintendent accepting those kinds of the state loan? Or are you talking about a local superintendent accepting funds at a local level?
So the, this, the person who signed this document was the state superintendent to accept the state dollars?
He may have accepted that for the entire state regardless of local control.
He did accept it for the entire district.
He may have, if it's legal and whatnot.
Right, right.
It stands up.
Right. You know, whether or not certain districts can push back on accepting certain dollars, right? Because they don't want to accept certain provisions, I think is worth pursuing. That's something I want to encourage the local board members to do, to be asking, show me the appendix here, where does it say what the requirement of this money is? Okay, that's the requirement, we don't want that money. That's what we need to start doing.
You need to tell them it's blackmail. It's really simple blackmail, the government does it to us all the time, and we need to stop it. What gives those teachers the right to decide what our children are going to learn when it comes to things other than real school subjects? This is a bunch of BS. It just infuriates me that they think they have the right to tell our children how they should think.
I'm, I'm with you.
But it's been going on for years.
It's been going on for years. So I want to do questions, I just got a couple more things I want to, I want to discuss. Okay, so that's, that's the resolution. I want to mention two other supporting legs of the stool. So we've got critical race theory, then you've got comprehensive sexuality education, and you've got social and emotional learning. Now, these are three legs of the stool. Right now, the highest leg, the one that's getting all the attention, is critical race theory. But what are these other legs of the stool? Well, just like critical race theory, just like equity sounds good, comprehensive sexuality education, social and emotional learning, sounds good too. They, they, they seem to address a problem. Comprehensive sexuality educate, but they don't. I know, you're shaking your head, of course they don't. But they, they seem to, right? That's how they're couched. Well, of course we want comprehensive sexuality educate. We want our kids to understand. No, not the way that you want to teach them. Not the age-inappropriate, explicit, graphic, borderline pornographic materials that you want to put in their hands on their tablets. No, no, we don't want that. Not the transgender literature that's being paraded to first graders at this point. Not the 15-year-old who was referred to a sex clinic behind her parents' back and underwent a sex change by the time she was 18 without her parents knowing. We had a mom testify at the state board two months ago that that happened, that that happened to her. So that's, that's the rotten fruit of comprehensive sexuality education. How about social and emotional learning? This is an umbrella, this is the catch-all. Again, it sounds good. We hear, well, students can't possibly learn if they're dealing with social and emotional challenges. Sounds good, I get that. No one's saying you can't pull Johnny over and say.
We did.
Maybe we had these teachers better.
No one's saying you can't pull Johnny over and say, you know, I know what, I know.
I would disagree, my friend.
But the, the problem is, these types of things, I believe, and there's a lot of evidence, they expose children to group, think, group manipulation, right? I mean, all the things that are going on with COVID. And that's social and emotional learning. So these are, these are things that are thrown around like it's just two plus two equals four. I mean, social, emotional, and social, emotional. You pretty much have to put that in an application to get a job. If you don't have the buzzword equity and social, emotional, don't even bother to turn in your application. I mean, so I just said something that is heretical, and the social, emotional, very few people, I think, kind of see that for what it is. I think people are, a lot of people are starting to see the critical race stuff. I think a lot of folks are concerned about the sexuality stuff. This other piece, it's a, I'm telling you, it's a supporting leg of the stool, of the stool. It really is. So I'm going to close with some upbeat information and a word of encouragement, a word of caution. If you go to any local district in the state of Ohio, I guarantee you, I don't care where it is, they're going to, and you ask them, do you do critical race theory here? What do you think they're going to say? No, 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 we don't, we don't do none of that here.
Actually, Brendan, I approached mine, and they asked me to define what I meant. And the board member said, it mean, this is a quote, guys. It means so many things to so many people. That's what I was told.
That is exactly, it's obfuscation, it's smokescreening, right? It's saying, well, critical race theory is just a theory. It's a theory that comes into law schools and other things. We're not teaching that theory. But the reality is the tenants, the principles of critical race theory, they are there because most districts in the state have a document like this, or they have a strategic plan, right? So it is, it is there. It's not acceptable for someone to say, no, it's not there. What you can say is, I'm not aware of any specific instances. We don't have a diversity, equity, and inclusion officer. I'm on the lookout for it. I will do an audit. You could say any of those things, I think, and be, and be genuine. But to just say, no, it's not here, move along? That, to me, raises more questions and more red flags than it answers. Go ahead, sir, I know you.
Well, I did, I'm from Tecumseh. What I did, I took this resolution with me to the board. And I says, now, I realize you're not doing critical race theory, but you're using Resolution 20, am I correct or not? And they looked at me like, here in the headlights, we talked about it. So what are you doing? Because they appeared to not have known anything about Resolution 20. Now, that was last month. It come to pass, I won't be asking again.
Yeah, I mean, I would caution you, Resolution 20, and this isn't the Congress, this is the state board. I mean, people are gradually tuning in, but not, not everyone's going to be aware of this. But what's, what they will know is these types of tenants being woven in.
So are you, are you saying that these tenants, that this resolution, these things outlined in this resolution are the tenants of critical race theory? Is that what you're saying? If someone were to say to you, what is critical race theory? Like someone asked, you know, asked him that, what would you say? Look at this resolution, these are all the tenants in critical race theory?
No, I, this isn't a, no, but I would say that the tenants of, I would say that this resolution contains many tenants of critical race theory. The principle of equal outcomes, bias, you know, this idea that we can control thought. It's about my actions.
Where is it saying we can control?
Well, it doesn't say we can control thought, but it says that board members will undergo training to identify their own implicit biases so that we can perform our duties without racial bias.
That's not control anything, we are merely controlling the thought.
I'm not saying it.
That's self-development.
So, yeah, well, sure, but the, the, the starting point is that you do have a bias. But, but a racial bias, I mean, this is all about race, right? So is your contention that we have, everyone in this room has a racial bias?
I don't know. I, how could I know that? I don't know.
So I, I just think I would start from the place that.
Huh? It has to be measured.
It has to be measured.
By whom?
It would have to be measured, but this, this resolution doesn't seek to do that, you know? It wasn't studied, you know, so there's maybe, there's a lot of assertions that are made.
So, so you're going to bring another resolution, you said? In that resolution, do you use any of these resolutes that are in this? Do you keep any of this?
I haven't crafted it yet.
Oh.
Because I'm, I'm waiting to see, I'm waiting to see what happens from the Attorney General. You know, I, so I don't think, I'm not going to say that 100% of what's on this page is, is harmful. But I believe that there are many harmful ideas and tenants that are woven throughout. This, a lot of this language can easily be weaponized, and it is being weaponized.
Isn't it implicitly biased to assume someone's implicitly biased?
Precisely. So this gentleman just pointed out the incongruence of that idea, to say that, he said that it's implicitly biased to assume someone's implicit bias, right? And that's, that's a contradiction in terms.
Yeah.
So we shouldn't be contradictory in terms.
How, Brendan?
Go ahead.
How easily, how was it so easily done to change from equality in our Declaration of Independence? How was, how come we just all of a sudden, one day got up and there Biden stands in front of everybody, says, we're now for equity and, and not just. And, and not just him, but a whole bunch of people that's been coming up for some time? How did it get changed so, without any real discussion with folks? It appears like it was just done and we're supposed to swallow it.
Just like people.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Why wasn't there a discussion on that?
It's been a long time in the making. I think a lot of these things have been there, but they've been under the surface, there's been an undercurrent, but they're now coming, they're coming to the surface.
But it's been an undercurrent by those that are in agreement that we ought to have equity, not equality, which is required by our Constitution and required by our Declaration of Independence.
Right. Good point, I see you were setting me up for that. Sorry, sorry, I didn't, I didn't knock it out of the park, so, go, go ahead.
Dr. Dole, playing 27 and a half years to the board, six months ago this time, I won't be running. The, what you say is spot on, it's from my experience in Xenia. If you, if you look at the difference between equality and equity, the way it was presented to the board, which does make sense when you look at it, and I agree wholeheartedly with you, you can't have equity and equality in the same, like ever same situation. Picture though, a five-foot-tall fence with three kids standing behind that fence trying to look over the fence at a soccer game. You have the tall dude kid that is way above the top of the fence, and he's having a good old time because he can see everything. You have the middle-sized kid who can barely get over, see over the fence, and he's barely seeing the game, and then you have shorty who can't see anything. So the fence is equality, and the game is equality. But somebody comes along and wants to give this person equity, so they take the little guy and give him two boxes to stand on, they give the middle-sized kid one box to stand on, and the tall dude gets nothing. So there's no equality there, but there's equity in allegedly dealing with the underlying program. That's, and I, I like that analogy, in fact, I used it the other time when we had the review.
Isn't that called just helping people out?
That's a good analogy.
That is, that's very good.
The second thing that you brought up, academic content standards, and nobody in this room should have any misconception, whatever. I've been on the board since I can count, '96, something like that, and the, when we got on the board, the board members individually reviewed every curriculum plan. So for instance, I took five or six hours to review the math curriculum from kindergarten to 12th grade, and then the next month we do English or language art. When they invented this word, academic content standards, superintendents fixiated on that, and at least in Xenia, we haven't reviewed content for at least 15 years. So, and the reason was, we're just taking the state standards and applying.
Wow.
There. This board today cannot say whether or not CRT is present, I think SEL has crept in to a computer presentation of schooling, and it's there.
What is SEL, sir?
Social and emotional learning.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So it's there, and if everyone's expecting, yeah, we have local controls, but it never raises its head, because now, our superintendent, we just built a new kindergarten or middle school, and he's appointed four committees. One committee is academic standards, or curricular standards, and the superintendent has placed everyone on that committee except the person called a voter. They're all hired guns, they're people who are on the payroll. So when you guys, when everyone's looking, it roughly should do, it's already here, the only way you're going to turn it around is with an election, and in November, you can turn it around in Xenia, if you carefully vote for who you want to run the show. Three people might change that on the board.
Wow.
Right now, it's four to one.
Thank you, thank you for your comments, thank you for your service.
Thanks, guys.
Very valuable, and so true.
Wow.
And that's the power, and that's the power you have. The same, I would say, is true at this state board, if we had the members, a lot of this would go away. One thing you mentioned about that, that graphic with the kids on the boxes and the fence, they take it a step further when they're doing their equity presentations, and they say, we need to take away the fence and then we'll have justice.
That's what I was saying.
Right? So there's your, there's your exploding the system, tearing down the system. The problem is saying everything is systemically racist? If that's the case, you should explode the system, you should tear the system down. I mean, if the sys, and that's what they want to do, that's what they want to do, they want to tear the system down. And that's them tearing down the fence of the game, the boundary that should be there. Usually, I've seen it not as a soccer game, but as a, as a baseball, it makes a lot of sense, because the fence really needs to be there if you're going to hit a home run, they're in the outfield. They want to tear it down and call that justice, and I guess everyone can hit a home run too. Go ahead.
Think, think about the fence, the state testing.
Yeah.
Okay? And then think about what you're voting publicly, however they're supposed to judge quality in schools. We have, we have like 19% special needs kids, Oakwood has less than 1%, so they can, they're going to have to report those scores. But we do, and we take it on the ear. So the fence is the test, and the guys that send us the check from Columbus every month are ranting and raving and coming up with new ways of measuring quality about which we have no control.
Yes.
And taking the fence down doesn't help, because I still got to put up with the test.
Right. So I'm gonna, before I completely turn you loose to the question, I'm gonna wrap up, and you probably made the case better than I would, especially being a local board member for 27 years, about the importance of being, you go in there, whether you're a voter, a citizen, a parent, they will, many, I shouldn't say all, but many will have the experience of having them look down their nose at you and say, what are you, what are you talking about? You know, not what, what you speak of. It's disorienting, they're professionals, they do it for a living, I don't, I'm a financial analyst, I don't do this for a living. I don't know, sir, if you do this for a living, maybe some of our board members do. If you don't do it for a.
I give, I give whatever.
So, so you're at a disadvantage, but you, you, you have to see through the smokescreen, you really do. I'm going to end with this, there's something out there called the contract with the district. I want to read these 10 points, and I'll, I'll, I have probably not enough copies. Oh, I guess some people have it.
I had a couple of cheese sherry.
I'm with all of us for the last one.
I took them off my school board last night, they were pleased to talk about it.
Okay, you can use these, and I'll pass, pass them around, and then I'll give you, it's got the.
Opt-in.
Yeah, I'll, I'll give you the, the, the webpage that you can find this at, but you can use this as you see fit, you can go and you can ask if the board members support these things at a board meeting, that's a, a little more of a combative way of doing it. You could send, you could send this to a board candidate and, and simply ask them, I respectfully request to know where you stand on these issues. You can change it, you don't have to use these 10 points. I worked on a gentleman coming up with 10 points that I think everyone ought to support, certainly anyone who considers himself a conservative.
Brendan, the, the website where we can find that?
Yeah, the website is hickspereance, H-I-C-K-S-P-E-R-I-E-N-C-E dot com slash contract dot PDF.
It's at the bottom, it's at the bottom.
It's at the bottom of the, of the page.
I'm going to take a picture of it.
And they'll get it out.
I want to make sure everybody got a copy, I can.
I will support and fight for academic excellence being the number one measurement of district success. Academic excellence, the preservation of advanced and accelerated programs and in-person classroom instruction. So advanced and accelerated programs, there's states around the country that they want to do away with accelerated math. Virginia, Washington, it's inherently unequal, right?
There's a global difference around here.
So I think you should support keeping that. Number two, I will support and fight for a fair, balanced, and accurate representation of American history, which inspires good citizenship and patriotism based on the ideals of liberty, equality, and justice for all. Number three, I will support and fight for parents' right to know and to consent to any counseling or treatment their child receives.
That is vital, that, that is so important. You know, we have reading, writing, math, history that should be taught, civics, which they don't teach anymore, we can't have free papers.
Yes.
But how dare they? It's not their job to counsel my child, it's not their job to treat my child, it's not. You know, there's such a thing, that saying, stay in your own lane?
Yeah, I agree.
And I, you know, I was lucky, we grew up, my parents were poor, uneducated, I went to good schools in the 70s and 80s.
I went to Xenia.
Kettering School, with good teachers, who stayed in their lane.
Sure.
My children were all adopted, they all showed up, they all had delays, I remember any, this equity crap, being bullied to put one of them, because of course, kids from foster care have to be ignorant and stupid, they need special attention, bullied to put one into an IEP. First week, instead of a 10-word spelling test, they sent home three words. So I go up there and ask the teacher, why would you give her three words? Well, she can get an A if she has three words. I said, but if you give her 10, even if she gets seven right, she fails, but she learns seven words. This isn't about your ego, baby, this is about this kid learning. But, yeah, I have a right to be a part of every part of education.
I, I couldn't agree more.
And they need to stay out of home, it's not their damn business.
Couldn't agree more. Four, fiscal accountability and stewardship that quantifies results and is not based on simple comparisons to spending in other districts. And then I will oppose and act against biological males participating in female sports or being permitted in women's bathroom areas or vice versa. Six, oppose, act against critical race theory, the 1619 project, and political bias in the curriculum or classroom that turns students against each other and/or their country. Seven, oppose and act against comprehensive sexuality education, Planned Parenthood materials, transgender literature, and attempts to sexualize children through graphic, age-appropriate presentations of human sexuality. Eight, I will oppose and act against social and emotional learning and whole-child ideologies that prioritize feelings over rational thought, intrude on family values and privacy, and expose children to group or psychological manipulation. Nine, a culture of entitlement that normalizes an ever-expanding role for schools beyond an educational mission and beyond a safety net for those in need. Do you know that the federal government, because of COVID, is applying, is, is supplying meals for every single Ohio student this year?
There's a.
Every single student has meals provided this year by the federal government.
18, 18 and younger, if I remember right.
Well, yeah, that's, yeah, 18, yeah.
17 and younger.
10, oppose and act against adoption or acceptance of any federal or state program that might co-opt any of these commitments. If they're forcing you to do it, we don't want it, don't co-opt us, we're not taking the money. That's what number 10 is about. So I know this was long, thank you for bearing with me. I'm happy to ask questions, or to answer questions if there's time.
Please take credit.
I have one question for you.
Back to you. A while ago, and you mentioned that in one situation, you were isolated and criticized by the group, that was one understanding, were you involved in anything? And how do you think they're going to take, say, conservative school board members, they kind of isolate them and maybe subject them to musical criticism with more sensitivity training or something like that? We talked about that, and I was just curious, do you see that down the pipe? This continues the way it's going, and we don't want it that way, but.
You're saying, I said that I was isolated?
Yeah, you said that you were criticized at one time. I, I may have mistaken it, but.
I mean, I'm criticized a lot. I'm, I'm not really sure.
I'm talking about whether the group criticized you as a person.
As a group on the state board?
Yeah.
I'll have to think about that, Paul, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not sure what specific time you're.
I was just wanting clarification.
I'll think about it, if it comes to me, I'll go back.
Did you say there is currently one vacancy on the state school board that the line needs to appoint?
That appointment was recently made.
Oh, okay.
So Mr. Walt Davis was recently appointed, and that, that seat had been vacant, that appointed slot had been vacant for, for a while, like seven, eight months, that was recently appointed. Yes, ma'am?
I'm sure all of you parents are aware of those PARC tests that our kids have to take a couple days before, you've got to be thinking about that. P-A-R-C-C, I have like seven grandkids exposed to those things, some in Columbus and some in Beaver Creek, and those kids are all calling up the crap tests, they, they hated them. Some of them had to take it on computers, some of them had written, and it was a mess. My one grandson says, I ain't finishing this stuff. And those teachers were trained one day a week for I don't know how long to give those tests, substitutes were called in, so our kids miss 20% of every week for I don't know how long of a real teacher. I've got, my daughter-in-law is a teacher, but they're not teachers, they're subs, I mean, and they were subbing their heads off, and I said, what is going on? They're just coming in all the time while the teachers are training, they took those tests, the state spent $25 million on them, and then the whole thing, well, they didn't really work out so well, and fell down the tubes. Any school district or school, whatever they are, that is that stupid and forces that stuff on our kids, and test them and test them and test them instead of teaching them, we need to just clean them out and start over, this is ridiculous. And the union is the worst part of it, yeah.
So I, I had a chance to sit down with superintendent, and after talking about Resolution 20 and different things, they told me that, oh, we follow the Ohio learning standards, and they took me to their website, a page, and also it has dates on it, you know, 1917, or 2017, this one's like science and things, and they said, no, we teach history, we, we don't want to teach people that there's oppressors and all those things, and, and they seemed very sincere and couldn't see any reason why not to, they didn't sound like they're trying to be deceptive or anything. So what's your thought on, on following the Ohio learning standards?
Sure, so I don't want to imply that I think most or all administrators or teachers are bad or card-carrying members of, you know, liberal activism groups, I, I don't mean to imply that if I, if I am, and, and they probably are completely sincere, but there may be some naivete there. I mean, the fact of the matter is, every teacher training program is saturated with this stuff. I mean, on the Ohio Department of Education website, they have, you know, equity this, equity that, equity corner. I mean, a lot of it, they talk about action civics, taking your class down to advocate for certain things, and they're not, they're certainly not conservative ideas that they're open to. So I'm not suggesting that these people that you spoke with, you know, are disingenuous, I, I just think, I think there needs to be more action, we should demand more action to prove that, you know, I think there should be an audit, what are the 1619 materials, are they finding their way into, you know, into a subject, into history? And they could be, do you know for sure that they're not?
How can we find out, Brendan?
So you could.
I mean, look at the, look at our child's history book or language book.
Yes.
Yeah, every parent has that right to have.
Being a divorced dad, guys, it's a little tough, but, yeah, okay.
Every parent has that right, you can do a public records request and get that information.
It's not an excuse, it's just it's a barrier that all, it's a fight.
Yeah, but it's my hope that elected leaders would, would try to help facilitate that, they would try to do it themselves.
Follow up question, can any parent petition their school, is it readily available material as I call for, you know, full review? I don't know, what would be the terminology for that?
You can show up to school and audit the whole day, you don't even have to schedule it, show up, tell them you're auditing at the day, they don't have to let you know, I did that twice.
See, yeah, see, I am brand new at this, guys, and so.
We all learn.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, man. Really, I feel better because. I feel better because, but I am able to go to my child's school and say, I would like to just have a copy of the curriculum book. That's, I'm, I'm good with that. I, that can happen.
You need to. You need to contact the curriculum director.
The curriculum director?
Yep.
Yeah, and they may refer you to the teacher. They may refer you to the teacher for specific materials. But you should be able to--
I wanted to ask, this resolution that you've shared with us, there had to be an author, there had to be a person who presented it to the board.
Thank you, ma'am.
Who is responsible, what party or individual submitted this to the board through review? There has to be a group or an individual that submitted it initially. It says, we will be, this contract.
Right.
So who, who's the dirty devil on this one?
Well, I promise you that the, the person who brought it forward did not write it, but President Laura Kohler, the president of the board.
And who sponsored it behind her? Was that ever exposed or shared? That, I'm, I'm sure with her great amount of education, she didn't sit there and write this on her own. Did she accept any co-credit for this lovely piece of garbage?
To my knowledge, she didn't say, you know, such and such a person in some, wherever wrote this. But go ahead, he's dying to--
Those are Miranda Dodd and Johnson.
Well--
With Kohler. Those are the four guys that--
Yeah, and they're behind the scenes. You know, some of these other members are--
Well, it was explicit.
It was explicit that they wrote it?
Come up with those names again?
Stephanie Dodd, John, Miranda Johnson--
Antoinette Miranda, Merrill Johnson, our current board members. But you know, a lot of this language you're, you're finding on a national level. You're finding it all over the place. So they're, they're collaborating, they're lifting it from something. It's not like this is unique.
So how do we remove them? Is there a way to recuse them or have them removed? Based on even this being race, you know, this itself is racist?
President Kohler is appointed, so you can contact the governor's office and express your displeasure. Merrill Johnson, got to move to Cleveland and vote against her. Stephanie Dodd's no longer on the board. And Antoinette Miranda, she's an elected member.
How are these all women? I'm so ashamed.
I would like to point something out. My grandson got a email, well, text from his English teacher. And embedded within that text, there was a reference to a pronoun site. This pronoun site included everything there was in reference to LGBTQ plus whatever else. So you're going to see some of this, obviously, in the English or language arts area. Because we, I can show you the email or the text right now. So that's something to keep a heads up on, because it is happening.
Yes, in fact--
You mind revealing what school system that was?
Uh, come on, sir.
The Ohio Department of Education, many of the emails that go out from the department and from members of the department, it has in there preferred pronoun. And the, the member would say what, what it is. So we know these ideologies are coming in. Jared?
No.
Yes, okay.
Do you have any comments on Ohio House Bill three-twenty-two and three-twenty-seven? Are you familiar with those?
I am.
Maybe the people would be interested in learning a little bit about this.
Thank you for raising that.
Yes, thanks, sir. I don't--
So these, these are house bills that have been brought forward. One of them, I believe, three-twenty-seven, brought forward by Representative Sarah Fowler-Arthur. She was a board member, state board of education member for eight years. And, and these bills are intended to, what they call ban divisive concepts. And really, what it is, is banning the teaching of critical race theory. But not just, you know, that's why it doesn't say banning critical race theory. It's these tenants, these types of concepts, banning them from, from, from being taught.
I can read it if you want, but go ahead.
Is it, is it, you want to read it?
Only if you want me to.
How, how long is it?
There's ten points that they're, that they're trying to make. Go ahead. That's right.
Well, it's good to know that it's out there, and, and that will be voted upon, we expect, once the session picks back up in the fall. So I would, I would encourage you to, to write your--
What were the numbers again?
Three-twenty-two and three-twenty-seven.
I think three-twenty-seven has more sponsors and more of a likelihood of passing. Go ahead. And then--
I just, just generally, we're talking about a lot of specific things here. But in fact, I have lost confidence in our government. They are corrupt. They will hide things from me. I will be, not be able to find what I want to find. I will not be able to find what that curriculum really is. And, and, and that's the, how in the heck? What is the best way that we can impact it? Yes, beyond the school boards. No question about that. Beyond the school boards. But how does, how do the rest of us ensure that our children are being treated fairly and that are getting proper education? What is the best thing that you see that we ought to be doing to make that happen?
I really believe that engagement in the local school board is the best way to do it. I mean, I really do, because it's up to those folks to right the ship. I mean, you heard that gentleman. I wish we had five of him in, in Xenia. You're looking for something else. I'll have to think about the next best way.
I, I think parents, parents need to go through the curriculum. Look at what the, what the wording is on every single thing that they're bringing home. Even the stuff that they're not bringing home. You know, teachers are making them turn in projects that they're not bringing home, so parents don't get to see it. Demand to see every single thing.
Thank you. I think the next best thing is evangelism. Just spreading, spreading the word, as she said, spread the word. You know, a lot of parents are, just don't realize.
They don't.
They don't realize. But if they knew--
I was one of them.
If, and once they know, wait a second. Never again. And then they'll start asking.
That's true.
And then they'll start asking. So I want to make sure I hit people who haven't. Yes, sir.
Just with all this suspicion about what's being taught in schools, and then I know it came up during COVID with all the remote learning, there's more talk about potentially putting cameras in classes so that parents can see what's going on? Do you see that happening?
No. Not much.
Yeah, I don't know. It, it's, it's very intriguing. I, I really want to--
What's, what's the argument against it? Well, that's not an argument. I'm just, that's who's, what was. Other people's children, okay. But they could, I mean, audio of something. I mean, to where you could hear, you have a firsthand account of what the, the teacher is saying to your kid, your neighbor's kid, you know, all that. I mean, I'm sure somebody can find an argument against it. But to know what they are saying to your kid during the day. Because I know my kid's at home, and he asks me, what'd you learn at school today? Oh, you know. But, but it's getting put in there, it's getting, you know, fed to them, you know, for eight hours a day or whatever.
Yeah.
Whether they, they can repeat it at the dinner table or not.
Yes.
You know, it's, it's in there.
Yes. I think we are going to look at that more closely.
And I mean, like I said, during COVID, there's all the remote learning, so parents are getting to see, you know, the teacher on the screen, you know, and get a better idea of what's being taught. And I think there was a lot of issues that came up during that, you know, parents.
Yeah.
I think that, and you have to put yourself in the position of the parent whose child acted up that day, got severely reprimanded, had a horrible temper tantrum, had a--
You got to keep the identity of the students.
And now that was made public.
Right.
So most of us would really hate that too.
Right. I get that. The idea, the identity of the students, you can't have that out there. I get that.
And I know we can continue on for ten o'clock.
I think some people, some people who haven't had a chance--
There's at least feedback there that I think--
Yeah, so John, gentleman in the blue shirt, gentleman in the red shirt, one standing, I think had something, but, all right, so go ahead. We'll go in that order that I just mentioned.
I heard you, I heard you mention--
I said, John, I said, John.
I want to piggyback on what you said, Paul. And I'm glad you're at state now. But I think most of these people here are fighting the wrong battle. You don't have to listen to state. I, I have chaired a committee, a commission here in Greene County for over sixteen years. I have a mix of, of conservative and liberals. I get an overs, there's an oversight committee, just like the state board for education, that sends me what they want it to look like in this county, constantly. How much money I have to ask for, how much, how they want to tell me how to do the job. Well, basically, I tell them, fire me. I can get paid for this anyways. Now, my position changes every two years. They have never voted me out in sixteen years I've been the chairman of that commission. The reason I say that is, it has nothing to do with your education other than I have to get my people educated. You need to fight it locally. Like I just heard this gentleman, I think you said you was worried about them using listening devices or something to that effect? Well, they can't do that in Ohio. That's illegal. Unless you're part of the conversation, you can't be, you and I can take one another, but you can't take us. It's that simple. That's against the law. So your argument, you're trying to fight the big ugly monster in Columbus or the big ugly one in DC, and you don't have to. You have so much control right here. I have had no problem with the state. They wanted to pass, they did pass legislation where they would pay ultimately a hundred percent of my budget, which commissioners love, so did we.